Okay, welcome to the Monday edition of the BOCC. We've got our budget review. I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Okay. Good morning. Kathy Funk-Maxter, Finance Director. We will, the assessor won't be here today, but we will still go over her financials if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll pull those up. Okay, the first slide is on revenues for the assessor's office. They have very little in the way of revenues coming in. We budgeted $24,050 for goods and services, and they've received already through the month of May $8,770. That's primarily recording fee. A portion of the recording fee goes to their office and their general funds. So their expenses are supported by the, primarily by the general fund, not by their revenues. And then expenses. They have their largest expenditure item, of course, is their personnel. They have $2,105,000 budgeted. And through the month of May, they have $756,000, $235,000, I'm sorry, expended. And so they're right on track with their target. They have 20 FTEs in their department, and they have no vacancies right now. They have supplies budgeted at $36,000. They have $10,342 expended so far. And then on services, they have budgeted $414,818, and they've expended $210,666. Of that services number, $188,000 was paid in January for internal services related to IT and primarily IT. So they're pretty much on track for all of their expenses for the year. I don't see anything unusual there. Okay. The next one up, and I'll have Sean join me, is our.
Quick comment on the assessor, Emily. I don't ever have a problem with her. In the time I've been here, I've never had her approaches with a want without showing us how she's going to pay for it. So I never have a problem with that, with what she does down there. She thinks it through and always has it figured out.
Okay, so we have a slide for facilities. They have two different funds, and the first one we're going to go over is their general fund. And from a facility standpoint, they basically only have one revenue item budgeted for miscellaneous. And this is where they do space billings, and those are normally done on an annual basis. They'll go out in July, and they'll cover the entire year. So they've got $189,900 budgeted for that. And that, no revenue so far. Then on the expense side, this is where the majority of our facilities crew resides. So they have personnel budgeted at $994,378 through the month of May. They've expensed $310,357. So they're right on track pretty much with their target. They're a little bit below because they have one FTE right now open. They've had some hirings and some internal promotions, and so I assume that very soon they'll be 100% staffed.
Yeah. Sean Ray with Public Works. As Kathy said, we have filled our prior facilities manager role, and we've been going through that rollout effect, and we should be hiring that last facilities technician here in the near future.
They have supplies of $137,500 budgeted. They've expended $53,631. So they're on track, right on track with their supply target expenditures over a 12-month period. And then on services, they have a large budget there, their largest budget, which is $22,945. They've expended $1,132,557. Of that expenditure, $719,000 is for internal service billings that were paid in January. And then this is also where they have their custodial contract, their utilities, things like that. So they also, their fund is hit with property assessment, or property insurance assessment. They pay that 100%. So. I forgot what that total is, but it's about 400, it's roughly around $400,000. So that makes up the current year expenses of over a million dollars, just with those two things primarily. So I don't, I don't see anything, I don't anticipate anything here as far as being able to meet budget and stay on budget.
In your notes, you have that the 719 is related to IT and insurance, which is why it's exceeding the target? Are those not, do we not know, are those now fixed costs?
No, when we do our target, we just do it based upon a straight 12-month. And so the target is based on five months of 12, but it's front-loaded on the services where they pay those in January. So that's why we're saying it's exceeding the target.
At this point?
At this point. It'll all catch up. But taking that into consideration, I don't believe there's any issues with their, exceeding their budget on services. Is there anything you want to add, Sean?
No, I think we'll have a better discussion on the next fund, the more fun one, in my opinion.
What's the, in the full-time employees in the bottom right-hand corner, 1,525.71%? What's that written reference to?
Well, we were looking at, we had tried to be, have something meaningful, but I don't know that this really is very useful. It's personnel expense related to total revenues, but they have very little revenues coming in. As you saw, the only revenue they have is $189,000. So I don't know that that's a meaningful. We were, we were looking for some meaningful ratios, but this one doesn't work for this account.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll go on to capital improvements. And this is, this is its own fund, separate fund from the facilities. It's primarily just for capital items and major repairs and renovations. And so it has a fund balance, but it also brings in revenue. It has taxes that's budgeted at $1,025,000. I believe the taxes are related to REIT collections. And so our actuals right now are $620,271. And we're expecting through the month of April, it was $226,000 in REIT fund, REIT number one funds. And that was specific to the West Rock ownership transfer, which is why it looks like we're exceeding our target for tax revenues. But that's just a one-time bump right there.
So we have a little graph and some numbers in front of you here. As Kathy talked about, in April of this year, we had a higher number than what we'd anticipate. We have those highlighted in orange here on April 25. That's from a West Rock controlling interest change. And so that alone contributed about $226,000 to the fund. The last time we saw something like this was in August of 2019, and once again, it was West Rockton cap sale, the sale of Capstone, excuse me. And that was about a jump there of about $287,000. Prior to that, any other ones that's really gone outside of the norm of what we're expecting to see would be November of '18. And that was another controlling interest change of a private entity that wasn't named in my research. And that was only about $98,000 of an increase there. Overall, we have seen some drop since the high of 2021, where we saw about $1.5 million. Last year was our low in the significant amount of time at $979,000. So these are generated as a .25% on all real estate transactions within Calhoun County, outside of the city jurisdiction. So outside the city limits of Calhoun County.
Sean, what is it that triggered about those trades, that increase?
You know, I'm not sure what triggers for them to pay real estate excess tax. But we just try and track it, and for our estimating and forecasting of it, we like to highlight those. So when we do a long-term forecast, we can remove some of those anomalies. We have a better data set for predictions on.
So looking at that tax revenue, if you were to take out the one-time item, we're pretty much on track with the 12-month target where we should be through the month of May.
And then I just want to add into the other financing sources. You see, we have a $2 million there for 2024 and 2025. The million-dollar ARPA, we do expect to spend this year with the courthouse project. The other half of that, of course, is an annual transfer from the general fund. That really helps keep our projects moving.
Yeah. And then miscellaneous revenue is primarily investment income on their balance, their fund balance. And that's budgeted $298,000 for the year, and we brought in so far $84,483. We're a little bit behind target, but I don't anticipate, well, that will be an issue.
Is that just in the county investment fund?
It is, yeah.
Yep.
Are all of our investments in that?
They are, yes.
Okay, on the expense side. So we have two positions that are 50% FTE, so partially on this fund. They're primarily, I believe, project managers. And so we've had budgeted $109,307, and we've expended so far this year $35,647. So we're right on target with our personnel expenses for budget. Services, we have $910,974. We've expended $65,438. These are primarily maintenance projects, and we project those out for a five-year period. So.
Yeah, we can get into, this is the fun spot.
Yeah.
So most of the expenses in here are going to be public work items, which require some affidavits, prevailing wages and things. So they do take a longer time to pay out. So we haven't seen all those processed yet as we're waiting for the items to process through the state. And then we have our projects that we're working on. So I'll turn your eyes to the five-year plan we handed out. This is from the budget time of last year. We are working on an updated version of this that you'll probably see here in the near future. Running through this, you know, the admin roof replacement, we just awarded that last week, line 12, line 13. You can see out in the front lot here, we're working on that parking lot. Hopefully, we'll have some pavement on that soon. We're reevaluating the courtyard concrete and working that courtyard area out so we have better drainage in there. CIP projects for the tenants are in progress. Sheriff's Evidence Storeroom was getting ready to go out to bid. IV removal we're working on. And then the, of course, the big one, the HJ HVAC is where we'll probably see the most change at on our update that you guys will see in the near future. The first top nine lines are all maintenance-based items. So, you know, when the mixing valve in the jail goes out or something like that, those are the lines that take care of those smaller items. Maybe roof repairs or some of the larger items that may be over the $25,000 threshold. I'm trying to think of something off the top of my head. The facade of the building, things of that nature. And that's what really drives the capital costs that we'll see in the budget that Kathy's talking about here.
Yep, so we have almost, we have $5.9 million budgeted for capital-related. And as you can see, we've only expended $38,111, but most of that's going to happen later in the year. That we're going to see those larger ticket items come through. And then the transfers is a $300,000 budget, and that is primarily transferring funds out to pay the debt service on the morgue. There's a morgue building and a morgue equipment, and that's an annual debt service. And so that transfer will happen, I think it's already happened. I think it happened in the beginning of June because we had a June. June 1st was the first part of the year's debt payment on that. The next debt payment is December. The next debt payment is December.
How much longer do we have on that note?
Um, it, the equipment was ten, ten years, and the other portion was, I think, twenty-year.
I believe that's correct.
And so that building was completed, I think, in twenty-one, twenty... Twenty-two?
Oh, I'm going blank on this one. I don't know.
Yeah.
Does anybody in the audience?
Yeah.
Twenty-two sounds right.
Yeah.
I think they occupied it, yeah, before I, I came in. It was like the year before I came in, so it would have been at twenty-two, I think, when they actually walked in it.
Yep, so we still have quite a bit of time on that. And that, that financing's at a pretty good rate, too. It's like three, three-point-something percent. So... And that's, that's it for their expenditures. Not much has happened so far this year.
A lot of things in the works, but nothing completed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had a quick question for you. Um, well, I asked Mike, but he didn't know. Just real brief of where you're at with Janice House.
Hmm, yeah, great question. Um, so I think she's reached out with Kelly over here to get a time in front of the board. We came to an agreeable contract. Um, so we want to get them in front of the board first, and then the following week we'll bring that lease to you. I heard you guys, I didn't get on in time, I don't think.
Hmm?
I tried to jump on in time.
That's all we have as far as departmental budget management reviews. Is there anything else you want to add? No?
Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
I have, uh, I know you want to get into something, and I think it kind of relates to that. And I wanted to ask you about this because I'm trying to grasp it. Uh, and where I'm coming from, the first lens I always look through when I look at things is through the taxpayer. That's, that's the lens I, I use. And I, I don't think that's any secret. I've, I've been shy about that. So, two years ago, or when we did budget, everything we did was in this room in the budget workshop. It was very transparent. Public could, uh, participate if they chose to. There was nothing behind closed doors. And so I'm trying to understand this workshop that we're putting behind closed doors that public doesn't have access to. I, I'm trying to understand that decision, why, when we're using their funds, that we're doing that.
Um, I think the budget workshop is intended to talk about ways to reduce our reliance on the general fund and ways to, as a group, talk about things that maybe, um, I'll, I'll use an example. One department has gone out and talked to some of their vendors about negotiating, um, paying their bills earlier than the thirty days and getting a discount. Maybe sharing that with other departments so that they would know, hey, this is something all our departments could do to maybe save, um, monies on, on the general fund. Um, just in general, things like that, to share ideas for the department heads as far as like what ways can we maybe, um, be more efficient and effective and reduce our reliance on the general fund.
And once again, since we're using the public's money, they shouldn't be part of this?
Yes, and what I, what I anticipate, we have our budget, um, calendar set, and we have workshops all during September and October, where each and every department will come in like they did before and talk about their budget. Talk about, um, poss- possibly, hopefully, talk about how they can reduce their budget, things like that. So, I, I fully anticipate we will still have discussions in, in workshops. We actually have, for example, one workshop dedicated to the mental behavioral health, mental health tax, talking about that, um, because we're living off of just the reserves right now and what to do in the future with that. So, um, that's what I anticipate. We'll still have public workshops, and we'll also be able to present any, um, ideas that have come, that comes out of the budget retreat as well to the public.
And then when you put it behind closed doors due to public meeting laws, that restricts us.
Yep.
I, I'm, I'm trying to find a good reason why we're doing this. Personally, I'm not, I'm not seeing one, Kathy. I'm not going to tell you, you can't do it, but I'm... Public entities should be very transparent with people that pay the bills.
I, I agree.
And they should be very transparent with the people that are elected to, in charge to try and run this place. And it doesn't seem like we're doing either one. So, I'll leave it, I trust you, and I think you do a great job. I'll leave it to you, but that's my concerns. And, and if it was a sole decision, we're, we're a three-man partnership, so we don't silo. We don't have the ability to make individual decisions. If I did, if I've, if I was in a different business, I wouldn't do this.
Well, I've, I fully, I, I fully intend that if we have this workshop, whatever we do, we do bring it, bring all the ideas to the full board.
Here's, here's the... While I'm on a roll, I might as well just touch on everything. Here's the other thing. Uh, people don't come to us because they want to. They come to us because they have to. We've instituted a fee, they have to pay a fee, they have to fill out an app, they have to get a permit. There's something that we require them to do that means they have to come to us. So, if, once again, through the taxpayer lens, if I'm out there and I have to come here and do something, then I'm, there better be people in place to take care of what I have to do because you made me come here. And so when you do these things, and you pull these things, and this is the same question I have for the sixteenth and seventeenth, are there, are we closing down any services? Are we closing down any offices that the public can't get to? For example, the auditors went through a period where they had some turnover, and she had to make, and I agreed with her decision. I don't disagree with her decision. She had new staff, and she didn't have staff to run full days the whole week. So she's made some adjustments on Friday. You know how long it took for us to get emails from people in the public? Didn't take long at all. They pay attention to that stuff. So, I, I want to know that offices are going to be functioning. On the sixteenth and seventeenth, I learned that we were closing BLCC by walking out the door, which is highly unacceptable. That's a decision of this board. And for me to learn it as I'm walking out the door, it may have been made by the board, but I wasn't one of the ones instituted. And if it was made by staff, they don't have that ability. They don't have that authority. So I need to know other departments are going to be operating, and they're going to take care of the public. In fact, I'd like a list of everybody participating. In case I get calls, I want to know who I'm going to call and talk to.
Yeah. The budget workshop, um, we put a placeholder for June twenty-third, and it's just in the afternoon, and it's here in this building. It's in the GMR, um, for department heads and electeds.
Could you send me a list of all departments and participants?
Yes, yes.
And I would ask the same for the sixteenth and seventeenth? A list of all departments and, uh, participants?
I think that was scheduled through, through, um, the clerk of the board. And again, it's, it's just department heads and electeds. It's not any additional staff other than that. So, uh, it's my anticipation that all the departments will still be open both of those days as well as the budget workshop day retreat.
Well, I'm, I'm struggling with trust issues a little bit here. And so I'd like to actually have a list.
Okay, no problem.
Chairman, if I can add to the, to the conversation, because I, um, I, I get the sense that, uh, a lot of what is taking place here is, is due to my, uh, inexperience and ignorance to a lot of the protocol. I am the one who started, uh, instituted the, the idea of having these, uh, workshops. And I, just for clarity purposes, I do agree with you that everything that we do does need to be, uh, transparent and in public. The, as far as the closing of the BLCC, that was typically, or that was just a, a timing issue. The plan was not to, to close it. We were having to arrange, uh, having the clerk of the board and/or Bailey, uh, here to run those meetings. And it was, we wanted to do it prior to the budget retreat that Kathy is talking about. So it was a, it was a timing issue, and those were the dates that were, uh, available. And so, uh, in the, and I will take responsibility for the lack of clarity and the miscommunication here. Uh, in the future, now that I understand, after talking with Kelly, what needs to happen, um, and the process that it needs to take place, um, I will be more, uh, proactive with that in the future so that there is no misunderstanding or, uh, unclear, uh, intentions. Uh, the intention is not to keep anything from the public. It was solely to, uh, the urgency to get it done prior to the, the retreat that Kathy wanted to have with the department head. So, um, I am the one that, that spearheaded that. And like I said, uh, as I'm learning, uh, the protocol and the processes here, uh, I will probably continue to make mistakes, and, uh, I apologize for that. But I do appreciate you helping me stay in line with the way things need to be.
Really trying to beat on anybody. I'm just telling you, I look at things through the taxpayer lens, and when I look at this, I'm going, this doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I guess I, I want to say I, I appreciate both, all the comments here. Uh, I have a, a question in my mind. I'm sitting here thinking, you know, are there specific rules that says that two department heads can't talk to each other about what they're doing? Is it, if three get together or four or five get together, they're violating some type of open public meeting rules? Or they're violating transparency? So, I, I don't anticipate out of this workshop that there's going to be some formal decision that's going to come up, but just a brainstorming session.
Yes.
And so I, I didn't have any of my red flags go up, uh, in that regard. Uh, I, I think a brainstorming session is a good idea once in a while. Uh, I don't know at what level that that, uh, some decision-making process does need to happen in this room or in a public setting. Uh, so I don't anticipate there's going to be some type of, uh, list of decisions and, and demands come out of this thing. Just some brainstorming ideas that any of those that would potentially move forward would be for discussion in this room in a public setting. So, uh, I guess somewhere, maybe I need a better understanding of where's that line drawn that says that X number of department heads can or cannot be together without violating an open public meetings rule?
The open public meeting, they don't have any. What I'm referring to is if they have it behind closed door, it affects us three because we can't attend or we can't participate in that. Because then that breaks open public meeting. So it's really, it's on this group up here.
Yep, so every...
They can get together.
Yeah, so every...
You know, I, I sit in, I actually sat in this chair when the public felt our chairman did things behind closed doors. And I watched the people come up here and just rip on him one after another. And that was really what was the drove, drove me being pretty much pushed into this, this chair, was they felt he was doing things that wasn't in the, wasn't transparent. And I watched them come up, and they said some incredibly tough and, and honorary and actually things that I probably would have got after him for if I'd have been longer than one month in office. Um, so it's, it's very, public pays attention to that, that kind of stuff. And I, and I'm just saying, if we do something and then I get complaints that they couldn't get their business done, we're going to hear about it.
I, I agree. Um, one of the, the things that, um, we'll probably go over in depth in the workshop is all of our department's, um, general fund looking at how they put their budgets together. So for example, when they're looking at their personnel and also budgeting overtime, if any of that overtime they're budgeting is because they traditionally have needed that for, to re, to replace a vacancy, that's a duplication of budget. I wanted to go over that and talk to them more in depth about, can you really drill down and look at your overtime to see? For example, are you budgeting because you needed budget capacity in the past in order to expend those dollars to cover vacancies? Now they don't have to do that because the budget for personnel includes direct labor, overtime, um, standby time, everything all in one budget category. And before, they were restricted because direct labor was its own budget category, and then everything else was a different category. So going over those types of things and helping them to understand, um, you know, that they don't have to always budget duplicate and pad their budgets, discussing those types of things in prepare, getting them ready to prepare their budgets is one of the things I expected to go over. And also go over those departments that budget and give back, don't spend fully their budgets, explaining that to them and showing them where they've traditionally had funds left that they budgeted but maybe didn't need to, things like that.
Okay. I'll get off my horse. I know you had other things you wanted to go over, but I will say for a third time, just so it's understood, I'd like a list.
Um, I'll give you the list. And it's, it's vol, it's also voluntary. I mean, they don't have to attend if they don't want to. Um, it's highly, I'm highly encouraging them to attend the workshop because they might learn something new about the budget. Some individuals had expressed to me that, um, they would appreciate to have a budget how-to, the how-to budget. Um, so that's one of the, you know...
That brings a whole other...
Yeah.
It's a little scary, we got department heads that don't know how to do budget.
Yeah. Well, I pretty much feel like everybody does, but I think the, the rationale is that look, having them look, do a deeper dive into where they didn't spend all of their funds in the past few years might help us to carve out a more accurate, realistic budget for the future.
Does it have to be a closed meeting?
I, I don't think so.
I mean, why don't we just say it's an open meeting, and then we're, we've solved the issue?
We'd have to, well...
Bubble aside, Sid.
It'd have to be on air.
Yeah. Okay.
I know you got other things you want to chat at.
I, I do have one item just to kind of kick... Um, Kelly, do you have a slide that I sent? And today I just wanted to present this, and we can get into more discussion about this later. But I just wanted to have it, something in front of you to let you know there's certain commitments in our budget that are, um, related to our collective bargaining agreements that are going to impact the two thousand twenty-six budget and the two thousand twenty-seven budget. So, next slide.
Yeah, and, and these percentages you're using are what's committed right at the moment.
Right.
It doesn't...
Yeah, so the...
It could change as new contracts are signed.
Right. So, for example, the sheriff's deputies, uh, their collective bargaining agreement, I understand, ends this year.
Yeah.
So that hasn't been negotiated, a new one for twenty-six, twenty-seven forward. Um, I'm just using some estimates here. But, but of the collecting bargaining agreements that we have, most of them that are, that are going into twenty-six, twenty-seven have a, um, have a commitment of the twelve-month average of the... average of the CPI index and is predominantly for salaries for the West and it's for certain region of the West. And looking at it right now, we looked at April to April, the numbers are running about 2%. And but with still having two more months because it was June to June in the contract and not knowing what tariffs are going to do and things like that for the next couple of months. I'm estimating 2.3 as a an estimate. So for those collective bargaining agreements and assuming I made the assumption that the deputies and some of those that are coming up would probably have maybe have similar. I don't know, but I just made an assumption. And so collective bargaining agreements and step increases, I'm looking at about 600,000 is what I'm projecting for a commitment off the top. And then for step increases for non-union positions, no COLA there. That's 200,000 I'm looking at. The medical insurance, it's built into the contract that says that we will contribute the amount that the employer will contribute annually. And that's built into the contract to say it's going to go up $50 per month right now. And so this is for all employees that are on general fund. I'm projecting about 300,000 increase there. Then a good news, the state reduced the employer contribution for the retirement. And so that's going to save us about 800,000, maybe a little bit more. But right now I'm using 800,000 as a conservative number that we'll have in savings on retirement. Retirement contributions right now that we are paying for employer is 9.11 and it's going down to 5.6, 5 point, something like that. So that's why it's a significant number. And then I put that we will probably, we may have a commitment on the public defender, the Office of Public Defender.
Yeah.
But I'm I'm waiting to hear from Ian.
Yeah, I called Ian and he called me back and trying to get in. I think it's because I think it's been delayed.
Yeah.
And but I I can't guarantee you that, but I think it's been delayed past this next budget cycle.
Yeah, it was a phase, it was a phase in they were recommending the beginning and he had the minute, the 26 was minimal from what I remember. But then the out years were more.
Because I know they went out and did some fighting because Ian doesn't think they need it right at this point in time. And I I think they were successful. And I'm speaking for him and I don't know all the facts, but I think it has been delayed past that. I I hope so anyway. You're going to have to deal with it at some point in time. Just I don't think it's this next budget cycle.
So I put unknown right now, but I'll I'll get some more information on that. And then our risk pool, you know, I brought back to y'all and told you after last meeting that they anticipate they're going to go up on their assessments for the general liability portion about 25%. So just the general funds portion of that will be in the range of 300,000, 325,000. So right now I'm looking at at a minimum, probably $625,000 of new commitments that I'll have to build into the 2026 budget. And so then other items that I I just want to put out there also is that we know that our behavioral mental health tax is running about those expenditures on that fund are 2 point, almost $3 million. We have a reserve, we've been using that. And so I anticipate we'll still have about 2.5 left when we finish this year. So we have almost enough for all of 26, almost, but not quite. So this next budget we put together is for both 26 and 27. So we will have to make some decisions on what to do with those expenditures. And like I said, we have a a workshop dedicated to nothing but discussing that in the future. And then COLA increases for non-union. If we do what we've traditionally done in the past, we would follow this, the collective bargaining agreements and I anticipate that would be about a $300,000 ticket item should the board choose to do that. So.
On the behavioral mental health tax, is that just administrative costs?
It's a number of departments that are funded off of the behavioral mental health tax. The largest one is our jail and it pays for about 1.3 million dollars of expenses for the jail and that's two officers. And then the biggest chunk of it is the actual agreement that we have with our health providers that provide services related to behavioral mental health.
The MAP program?
The MAP.
Yeah.
So that's one of the biggest ticket items that's in that 2.9.
That's the biggest ticket item and and that's a mandated item.
Yeah.
That's a state mandated item. We don't
Yeah, we would still have to provide those services. The other, the other largest ticket item that's in that is our drug court. It's about 629,000. Another example is in the juvenile, there's a clinic clinician that's the mental health tax is paying for. So those are some of the examples. There's some other smaller ones like the clerk's office, their handling of cases related to the drug court, I would assume. So anyway, so like I said, there's a whole session dedicated to a workshop dedicated to discussing our future issues with this behavioral health tax.
If the past is any indicator, that will be a lively workshop.
Yes, in the past, they've been highly, highly participated by the public. So I just wanted to put this out there. This is, this is the types, this is one type of information that I would be sharing in the workshop so that our department heads know these are the commitments we already are contractually obligated to. To there may be some more, but these were some of the larger ones. That's it. I just wanted to present this and
Thank you for the heads up.
Heads up.
Okay.
Okay.
Before we get into agenda, I had one other miscellaneous item and I don't know when she'll bring it. I sit on, one of the committees I sit on is I don't know exactly what they call it, but it involves tourism and we get a, the county and the cities, they all get some tourism dollars from hotel tax that that come in. And then we can, the committee I sit on looks at the the funds that the county gets and then we disperse it out. We vote on and disperse it out to different projects. So that's where I fit in with the tourism thing. Kim kind of runs a lot of the tourism for for the county. She brought together the tourism tax fund is actually it's it's grown some and we don't, every, everybody seems to be doing their own thing from all the cities and and different things. So she brought everybody together, all the cities, or she invited all the cities. She invited all the, all the ports to come together and say, how can we maybe do this more collectively and and promote our county in a more global manner while still taking care of the things that are unique to Klammer, the things that are unique to Longview and stuff. And they were all on board with that. The only city in in port that didn't part, has not participated at this point in time is Woodland. And I'm I'm not sure why. They're going to reach out to them again. I sit on that because I'm on the other committee and as a commissioner, because the county for a lot of these funds, it comes through the the tourism tax and the county acts as the agent, the agent that transfers that stuff and and does things with it. So that's where my role comes in with this. They put out an RFP and they've picked a a firm, actually the same firm that has helped climb a port to try and draft a a way of looking at it more globally in in more modern times. We still do a lot of flyer stuff and people don't do flyers anymore. They just look on their phone. You know, there's different ways of doing anything way beyond my comprehension. It's not my deal. Getting to the point here is that contract at some point, because the county is the conduit for those funds will come before us. Kim will bring that that to us and you'll have a chance to see it. So I just, just so you're, I don't want you to be shocked by it or unaware that it's it's coming. She'll bring that and she'll be able to explain this much better than I, but if she happens to bring it while I'm I'm gone, that that's what it is. And it's all the cities and all the ports, like I said, with the exception of Woodland has not participated yet that are on board with this and want to move forward. And so she's kind of building this contract and you'll get a chance to see it.
Is it City of Woodland and the port?
Yeah.
Both of them?
Yeah, it's both of them. And they're, she's reaching out again and trying to get some, I think it's going to be, actually, I think it's going to be a a good thing. The website, I mean, they should be able to be more cohesive with Klammer has some great things going on. Longview has some great things going on. Castle Rock is is part of this. And so I think there's some synergies that can be had with it. But I just, I didn't want you guys to be caught unaware that this might come before you.
And she and I, I'll I'll just chime in. She and I have talked about this. The, there's some fund balance also sitting available. And so there is funds available also from the sales tax that haven't been expended from past years.
Yeah.
And so there's, she would be doing a budget amendment as well, this next budget amendment.
And I've been, I've sit in these and tried to be sometimes they look and they say, well, what do you think is the county wants to do? And that and I've I've taken approach where I'm just kind of sitting here and listening. I'd rather you guys decide how you want to do it. And you tell me where the county fits in and if we, what you think are the best role for the county to help you. I'm, I want that to come from you. I don't want it to be top down and I don't want to say, well, the county says we'll do do this. I said, we may not be able to do, I don't know what you're going to come up with and and we may sit here and say, I don't know that we can do that. But I think that's the, that's a better approach than just me being vocal and saying, this is what we're going to do, work around it. I don't think this case warrants that. So.
Yep.
Okay. Gina, my, I see we got sheriff, we got Health and Human Services, we got public. Sean, are you public works? I think we got everybody. If you want to go through, if you want to start with agenda.
I'll start. Kathy Duncan Baxter, Finance Director again. We have an agenda item for some contracts that is the second half of our rural public facilities grants that we've awarded. And so I got those completed and the signatures back. So
That's one, two, three.
I think there should be just
Two, three?
Three, three items there. Now we have one still and I just want to make sure that I got this right. There is a study and it's actually from the interest income on our public facilities tax and it's a study for dredging material that the COG wants us to issue. So I haven't done that contract yet. I wanted to make sure that was approved, if I remember correctly.
Well, it was approved two to one, but when you bring that back and I, I, my request would it be a week that I'm I'm here?
Okay.
And it not be an agenda item because I'm not done with that one.
Okay.
I, I not be part of consent agenda because I'd ask it to be pulled because I'm not, I'm not done
Would you like it to
Speaking my piece on that one.
You want it to be a motion item and bring it at a time where all all three are here?
Right.
Okay. That was it for me.
Okay. Are you representing the sheriff? Okay. Yeah, absolutely. We get for a little bit today.
Sorry, these chairs aren't real. Duty belt friendly. Good morning. We just had two items for the consent agenda. Believe the first one would be the SWAT and local agreement. This is just an update to the previous agreement, which was, I believe, 2011. This is removing Calletts to Fire and Rescue and adding the City of Castle Rock to the agreement. The legal handiwork in here was done by David Berger at the prosecutor's office. And it covers all sorts of scenarios in our in our local agreement.
Okay. This is an update to agreement that was last done in 2011. Did I hear that right? And we're, City of Castle Rock is being added?
Yes, they now have
They worked it in the past one? Okay.
Yes, they've now added a member to the team.
Just notes for myself when I talk tomorrow. Okay. That it?
That's all I have on that one unless you have any questions. And then the second topic was our renewing our contract with Reliable Solutions. They are our Spillman Software Technical Support Contractor. They have kept our current cost from this year the same for the next three years going forward. The service they provide to us is 24/7 support. This is a software we use both for our deputies, being dispatched to calls, writing their reports, our records, processing orders, our jail records. And all the law enforcement agencies within the county use this. They do a lot of things where they if we have an update from state or federal computer systems that needs to be a patch applied to this, they'll make sure that it gets done correctly. They'll also let us know whether or not we should do the latest update or or wait for others to be the canary in the coal mine and see how it works out first. So they've been providing very good service to us for a number of years.
Great job on keeping that the same for three years.
Yeah, we're very happy to see that.
Yeah.
We're not getting that from a lot of other contractors.
And I think it's good to point out, they handle like everybody in the county, right? I mean, through 911, so we're all our entities are on the same, working with the same.
Yes, yeah, they they, we tend to end up having similar issues between the departments. It's nice when they can step in and look for a solution for all of us.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree with that. Okay.
Any questions? Otherwise, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gina.
Hey, good morning. No, this chair is funny. Okay. Gina James, Health and Human Services. Contract we have on the agenda tomorrow is with Housing Opportunities of Southwest Washington. It's sort of the second part of a project that they had submitted a proposal to the county for a couple of years ago, actually. So this was the first part was a construction project for Sunrise Village. So they have completed construction now. They're having their grand opening here this week. This was part of that proposal. This is a supportive, some supportive services onsite. They have some units that are designated for individuals who have recently experienced homelessness and or maybe have been fleeing domestic violence situation. And so this will provide some supportive services onsite so the individuals can remain stably housed, get connected to resources to help keep them housed, that kind of thing. This contract is a three-year contract. So Housing Opportunities asked if we could do it for a longer period just to help fit with some of the other funding they have available to help with this as well. And it's not to exceed $60,000. So that's for the three years, not not annually. I do have one correction that we'll make um for the DocuSign version in the reporting section. We had an error under that um particular piece, so we'll um we're getting that corrected. It's they'll be um asked to submit annual written reports to us just with updates on um how the things are going at the project, how um they have some goals identified in the contract, so they'll be reporting out on those pieces. So I just wanted to mention that because it will, we're working on adjusting that particular piece.
Just to reiterate, so I'm totally clear, this was all approved by a previous board.
Mm-hmm.
Everything in this current contract you're asking us for was approved by a a previous board and and it's just in being enacted now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I knew it was coming, okay.
Yeah. Any questions?
See you, Nini.
Okay. See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Sean Ray Public Works, I'm glad you saved the best for last. Number six on a consent agenda.
You get a sense of humor, Mr.
Number six on the consent agenda is a contract completion with uh Advanced Electrical Technologies for the on-call contract at Headpor's landfill. Uh, we are doing the 23, 24 period so they can get the retainage back. Um, some of the work they do up there is, you know, PLC replacements, uh, transducers replacement on our leachate ponds, uh, communications things, um, other kind of more detailed electrical items. In 2024, we spent about 53,000, just to give you an update on that contract.
What is PLC?
It controls pumps.
Programmable logic controller. Oh, my God.
Thank you.
Wow.
They're they're fancy like. They're in a cabinet, I know where they're at, that's about it.
It's uh just what it sounds like, it's a programmable logic controller. You bring in a lot of feeds from different locations and then you program it to say that if this and this and this happens, then it's okay for this to happen. And if this doesn't happen, this fails, so.
Like automatic logistics.
Yeah, it's just all logistics and basically you you program a a series of of lines of logic and set it up and say, you know, this has to go before this can go and then this can go and and if if something up here stops, it everything behind it stops to protect it, so.
Yeah, so we we use them for our leachate pumps and also our our flare blowers. So depending on the level of the ponds, pumps may scale up or down or things like that.
So you're saying we spent about 54,000 on this contract in?
In in 2024, yeah.
Okay. Is that pretty normal?
Yeah. And that's all I got for today.
Okay, Mr. Best for Last.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Do you know if Jessica had anything sitting? Okay. If we don't have anything else, we can be done early. Not seen anything, we'll adjourn.